All right, so let me just kind of talk for a few minutes, give you a background of how we got up to this time. For those of you who've been reading my emails and such, some of this will be repetitive, but this kind of gave everybody a baseline of where we're at at this point and where we need to go in the next few weeks as a school committee and district. So, you know, updating from last week, it was a crazy week. We started off with canceling trips at the beginning of the week, then to canceling our our big drama production of Annie and a basketball tournament and, you know, it was all kind of chaos. And then on Friday, we really kind of got lit up as we got, went from one conference call to another with the state. And then we had people doing things opposite what the state was asking us to do. And in the end, we ended up closing for two weeks. It's kind of a big, it's a good story for me to tell some other time. And then on Sunday evening, after another meeting I had with the commissioner, the governors shortly thereafter, closed the schools for three weeks. Um, I do want to, before I go into more details, I do want to thank Meg Birch, our nurse leader, and our curriculum directors, Kim and Sarah from behind the scenes last week. It was a very, very long week. And they kind of became my, my team in my office as we try to handle each one of the problems that came up. And we kind of were ahead of everybody else in the state. And so we would make a decision with all the stress. And then the state would make the decision. And that was, um, it was nice that they kind of confirmed our decisions, but in the, in the end, it was a, it was stressful at the time. I want to thank them. And I want to thank all the staff members across the board, our teachers, all our administrators. Let me shut my phone off. And for their hard work and being supportive throughout the week. There's a lot of moving pieces here, as you will see in a few moments. Um, so about the closure, basically what the state said is that, you know, we're closing for three weeks. Right now, the maximum number of days that we will be going to school will be going to the 185th day on the calendar. So that will put us at, um, I believe June 18th. And three of the days this week are actually snow days that we are going to be using, enrolling them toward the end of the, being put to the end of the year. That's if we early going for three weeks. You know, when we spoke with the commissioner, he kind of was very freely talking about how there's other scenarios that if we're not back after three weeks, then maybe we'll be scenario number two, which is maybe we'll be back by the first of May. If we come back by the first of May, um, you know, he's, at that point, we're talking about MCAS testing and those kinds of things. He's hoping that we'll get a waiver from the federal government. As you may know, that the MCAS is a federal government mandate that we have, that that type of assessment. He talked about waiving that and really trying to do like seven weeks of strong schooling to finish off the school year. The third possible scenario, depending on how this all unfolds, is we are closed for the remainder of the school year. Again, those are, as you probably all sit back and read the news, those are all all realistic possibilities, you know, looking ahead. Again, the state testing, um, I got a little agenda here. The state testing is, um, the MCAS for 10th grade is, has been, you know, canceled or postponed at this point because it was supposed to happen during these three weeks. And the length of the school year, they did talk about, you know, if, if this thing does drag on for two months, will they have us go to the end of June? Those are things that they could change on a dime. But right now, they're saying that we're going to the 185th day, which again is June 18th. We start earlier, being a Western Mass school, because we, we plan on snow days. Easter mass, many of those schools start later, so they're 185th day maybe later in June. So we're going to see where, where, where that goes. Alright, so that's, so basically that's kind of where we're at with the school closure. I'm just going to open, keep it by section. If you have any questions as we go, I went up the chat, the chat line is that bubble in the right hand corner. Just simply write in your question on the topic as we're going through. And then I can, I can, yeah, at the end of when I'm talking about each section, just try to answer those questions. So we kind of, you know, have to save them all to the end. It is also a lot easier. You will see going from one speaker to a next is not, is not simple. You don't do this daily. So it's easier to get your questions out that way. And that is also recorded. Anything you put in the chat box is part of the recorded session here. So you want to keep those on the up and up. Alright, so the school's response. So once we, once we closed, we immediately, you know, I kind of looked at the hierarchy of needs and what we had to do as a school district. And the first one was to make sure we put in a meal system. Unlike some, some urban districts that have meal systems that take over during breaks, summer vacation. You know, we have, um, we don't have that in place. So, you know, we started on Monday. We decided that I'm going to open up breakfast and lunches to all of the four towns, even though all four towns don't qualify for breakfast. We called every single family, the secretaries, thank you to the secretaries in each of the elementary school. We will, um, we asked them to call every single one on the free and do lunch, free and reduced lunch, and asked if they would be needing that service. And we also are prepared to offer delivery of those lunches. So we're delivering the lunch with the next day's breakfast. After that, we then opened it up to anybody, any child under the age of 18 in our district who may need, um, who may need food during this, you know, times. And this may change. And we know that over the coming weeks, as different people are being laid off and, and things are changing in their homes, maybe that may expand. I've also reached out to the community and to post on the websites as well to let anybody who's not in our schools, but are also under the age of 18 in need of food be able to get that. Additionally, I've also reached out to the senior programs through our towns. Sorry, I'm also the manager of this meeting, so people do things that pops up in the middle of my screen. So, you know, we, we reached out to that. The cost of a breakfast is a dollar 12 and a cost for lunch is a dollar 47. So I thought that was really important to hanging up on this cell phone, because I think you're online now. And like I said, it was the costs are $1.12 for breakfast and $1.47 for lunch. And so, you know, I want to put that out to the seniors. Because I understand that, um, you know, another vulnerable group during this time. And if they, the senior groups want to jump onto that service, they can. Any questions on, on food service? So put those in as well. Since I was here, we, the question came in, should we, should we and can we cancel April break? That came in twice. I would say sit tight right now on that. It is certainly something that we can look at. My gut right now is that three weeks is going to be the beginning of a longer term. Also, and when we talk about teacher contracts later on, if we cancel April break, we're going to have to relook at that. Anything's on the table. But there's a good possibility we might be, you know, still in closure over April break. So I would say we kind of see, we see where the, where this thing kind of turns over the next, over the next week, we're going to get more and more information as there are more and more tests. And we're going to see what kind of strain is put on our health system. If it's going to be the, the die of the, uh, the really bad numbers that they're predicting, or the more conservative numbers that we're all hoping for on our healthcare system. So that's my there, but this is something that is your, or the committee, so we can steer this another direction, but that's my, my thought there. Alright, and then move on to my next part. And again, if you, you type, again, type in question as we go. If I hit something or I miss, miss speaking on something, um, or want clarity or something like that, feel free. The next thing we did, we also brought in our custodial staffs to all the buildings and they've been cleaning since Monday. I'm just kind of getting us a new base zero. You know, as of, you know, I haven't seen the numbers today. As of yesterday, there were no cases in Franklin County. But as you know, the other fear is that there are a lot of cases out there and that we just don't have enough testing. So, but however, you know, we are cleaning our buildings and then we're also kind of listing up projects. We'll talk about paying and the staffing. I'm going to save that to the end because I have some documents that are out there. The next thing we've been working on and are getting released, getting ready to release the teachers with the teachers tomorrow is that we're looking for continuing education opportunities at home. We sent out a doc and I sent it out to all of you, probably around four or five this afternoon, regarding our elementary continuing education and our secondary continuation education plans. Now, these plans are not in place of school. They are basically extensions of school that we can try to get kids to do things at home to continue learning to, so their academics don't, um, you know, come to a stop. So that's kind of the, in the spirit of it. So far, the teacher feedback on this has been great. Teachers have already been reaching out to students in their classes, not just, and just in support and like, you know, talking about continuing reading. We're hoping to extend that as we, as we move forward. Just giving different fun activities, not just like, you know, go read for a half hour, but you know, maybe do a scavenger hunt with the family. Maybe, you know, go outside and identify things of spring, you know, and then come back and write it in a journal, you know, based on, you know, we're talking from pre-K all the way to AP courses. And jumping through to AP courses, you know, they're looking at that as well. The AP is about whether or not the testing is going to be when it is. And I believe they put a, Allison, I think you're on, you can kind of write in with the, the update on that is. But I believe they put that on hold as well. But, so you have different kind of levels all the way through. And that's the hardest part that we have to deal with. We have different levels of technology. We have different levels of which families can assist, whether or not they're at home with their children during the day. You have different grade levels, who has devices, who doesn't. We're trying to track that down. And basically we'll roll out, depending on if this goes on as well, rolling out our iPads that are used for classrooms, get them home to students who may need them. They don't have a computer at home. And we're also, you know, there's a lot of great low rates and free introductory packages being put out by cable companies right now to be supportive in this ever. We're getting that information out to people as well. So there's a lot going on in that and I can kind of go on and on, but it's, um, you know, read through the document we have out there today. Tomorrow I have back to back to back to back meetings of this type that we're doing tonight with all the staffs to, um, you know, do virtual conversation regarding how we're going to rule this out. There's going to be trips and concerns and things are going to go right and things are going to go wrong. I read this great article from out of China about how they dealt with education. And they're really, their main advice was, you know, you know, be prepared to modify your plan as you go. Because what you think is going to be, um, is going to happen will change and just be, to be prepared to be fluid. So, yeah, alright. So, um, questions on that? Jessica Corwin kind of jumped in and basically said there were five presumptive cases in Franklin County today per the recorder. So I stand corrected, it is amongst us at this point. And the AP College Board, we're releasing information on the 20th and regarding extension or alternative testing sites are being discussed. So, you know, looking at those, those kiddos who are really wanting those, those courses for credit in colleges. And when I say the word credit, it also talks about what are we going to do about seniors and graduating? We're working on that, but that's kind of a wait and see. If this is a three week thing, again, it looks very differently than this is a made one thing or remainder of the year thing. So we will have to modify. The good news on, you know, credits and that kind of stuff, I don't believe we have any students that need to pass the MCAS in order to graduate. So we don't have to worry about that one thing, which I know other districts are struggling with about how they, to meet that, that, that item. Alright, so that's where I'm at as update to what we've been working on. Now I have a list of stuff that we need to be working on, meaning that the committees. So any questions on anything I said there? I give you a chance to type away. Okay, so the next thing that we need to talk about is I met briefly with the chairs earlier this week about the first kind of emergency meeting about how do I get through the week? You know, the one thing that we aren't is with a 25 person committee overall, you know, in five committees. So we aren't nimble in those kinds of things. So I hope people can appreciate and support the chairs that supported me. They basically said, take care of this week, Darius, regarding pay and that kind of thing. And then we'll bring everything else back to the school committee moving forward. So basically, because we had multiple school snow days this week, it was kind of easy in the sense that we, those are being pushed to the end of the year. And it's not really a whole lot of, you know, money being moved around and, and decisions around money. I did decide to pay everyone for the week outside of the snow days. And that goes across the board. So, you know, we ended up doing that for this week. But we are going to be looking at teachers in IA, MOA. I did send a draft out to you. For those of you who are on, who aren't computer savvy, you can on your screens, you know, you can move around and open different applications. Just don't close this one. So you can look at that as we're, as I'm talking to you, you just won't see this beautiful thing. So you're supposed to see lots of laughter, you know, hear laughter. Alright, so the first, the, the, the MOA draft, and I'm turning sideways because I have everything digitally next to me, is still, is still under under construction, as you can, as you can see. Basically, the outlining of it is that, you know, I guess I'll read through each part of it and hope that's not too painful. I mean, I guess people can chime in text wise as they go into some unshowered territories. But if a staff member is subject to a mandatory quarantine by a governing body, said staff member will be placed on paid administrative leave for the duration of the required leave. Employees paid on paid administrative leave will receive full benefits and otherwise be held harmless. Paid administrative leave will not be deducted from the cumulative leave. Okay, so that's kind of where we got to kind of learn the language there. Did the worksite be closed for any reason? The committees will place all employees on that worksite on a paid administrative leave. Employees paid on administrative leave will receive full pay and benefits and otherwise held harmless. Oh, alright, I started by saying that the frontier school and union 3D committees agree the following protocols and procedures will apply to all employees during the current state of emergency concerning the COVID-19 virus. So this is for during this state of emergency. Now I have to tell you, you know, going through this, I probably am quirk sometimes about setting the stage on so many things. It's been great working with their union leadership on this. They've really, I think, you know, not only stepped up, made themselves available to me on Friday, they stayed late to talk about some of the problems and concerns I had and how we were going to lay things out. They then again met with me today on this as well. So it's just letting you know that they're, they've been great so far. I said so far, but it's going to be great all the way through. And we also really, and I told them, if we have to modify, if there's things that we don't, we don't predict that, I think we're really, we are talking in a way that, um, you know, if things change, we, we may have to make other changes. Ken kind of wrote that, I think the draft seems to cover most of the basin is clear for all involved. So the question, the question that, uh, has, you know, has come to me regarding this and the, uh, non, uh, non-union staff members, is that right now they're paid for quarantined, but they are not paid for, they're, they're going to be required to use sick days should they become sick. Okay, with the COVID virus. There were members of staff of both of the, of the, uh, non-union staff that were concerned that, you know, I could be home with a spouse, being quarantined with that spouse, and then once I receive and get the virus, that then I would have to use sick days moving forward. So looking for thoughts on that. Again, again, we're discussing this tonight, not voting this tonight. So you can be able to walk away and have some chats, you know, with yourself and other, you know, members, obviously following over me law about that in chats with me. Basically, right now, there are members of our staffing, which I'll get to the other one in a minute, that are coming in and going to work. And yeah, she go through that and then we can, we go through that and then we can talk about that. Any question on the MOA? Before I go. And that's for all four of our unions. The one thing that is different than some of the other MOAs is that we are talking about, they are going to do some hour, four hours of a day of remote work. They're not just, the teachers and IAs are not just staying at home. They are going to continue to stay involved. And this is reaching out to the students and to families and, um, planning different things and, you know, kind of motivating people along through this time, which I think is, um, if we can do that well, it's going to be, it's, we're going to make a positive out of negative here. Seeing no comments coming in there. I'm going to go over to the, what am I looking for here? The basically the agreement, we kind of wrote agreement between all non-union personnel. Now remember, in non-union personnel, we have a lot of different categories here. And so I'm going to take it through, but the biggest one, can, you know, if you read through the top part of that, the administration, so this week I am closing the building on Friday. Everybody came in, put in a long, it's been a long hectic week. And then I'm also trying to do some, some balancing of, you know, people being able to get, get out of the workplace and get home and that kind of thing. So the building is going to be closed on Friday for everybody who's in this, in this group that has worked this week. And then starting next week, custodians, as you can read through there, we're basically looking on three days on, two days off for the week. That's the plan I have on the table and presenting to you. So basically they'll be working for 24 hours and off for 16 hours and being paid for the full week. We have a series of, um, you know, as we get, the buildings are now cleaned. We now have a series of projects they can do, some other deep cleaning areas, some things that's been put on the back burners at different schools. So we'll be, we'll be looking at that. I'm sorry, you know what? I didn't scroll down. Ken, Keith asked, wondering about the consistency in non-PTS teachers in years one and two. In years one, two will step to next year, but teachers in their third year district will not advance to professional teaching status. So this is not affecting a lot of teachers. It's, it's a good question, but basically what we want to do is that the spring of the third year is when basically the decision is made for teachers going to professional teaching status within the evaluation system. And basically for those on the, on the board who don't understand that we're not up to speed, I don't want to use the word understand, not up to speed on this is basically after you, once you get professional teaching status, the level of evaluation for non-renewal is almost the difference between the old being tenured and not tenured. It becomes far more difficult for a school to move on from that teacher. So if you, so the idea here is that we don't have the spring to work out the, the final of that. And it's really giving those teachers an opportunity to have a third year again. There's two ways of looking at it. One could say they're on that probation for an additional year. There's one that could look at it and say you have the opportunity to, you know, move forward with that. I believe that both unions' leadership has agreed, you know, based on the number of people it's affecting, that they agree that, you know, we're allowing the other steps to move forward and just that final step. Because we weren't allowed, we weren't able to do that that way. So that's, that's the idea there. Okay, so sorry, I have to read and do that same time. So, um, so please follow up on that one and I'll move on to the next one, just to keep my mouth going here. Jessica asked, can you please clarify the last sentence, the second is, the days in which they do not work will be held against paid time off. Do they have to use their personal accumulated paid time off? Typo just fixed by Shelley. So, I love the live document. If you don't like it, cross it out. No, don't do that. Alright, so so basically, um, when we get through all the different groups and then we can go back and talk about those different groups. So that's what we're doing with custodians. So we're going to work a shift again. We create with the social distancing plan from the state, you know, you're going to have people being in smaller groups working on things. Although our sites are large enough, we can come away from each other. But again, it's also allowing them to be home. I think there's some level of, where I believe that the, you know, we got to some equity of getting people home with their families during this time as well. That's my personal preference on that. But again, it's going to be your call in the end to agree to this or not. The food staff, similar, they're going to be on a rotating schedule. We're still keeping everybody at work. But they're going to be rotating in on different days. They are preparing those breakfasts and the lunches and rotating them through each one and for that. So they are going to be, continue to receive full pay and on a rotating basis coming through. Out of school time, you know, I'm going to probably have to come back to you guys at the next meeting with this. The issue with this one is out of school time is reliant on tuition coming in. We will be going into, I believe the number Shelley, I think on this was 21,000 over three weeks is the pay going out. And, and Shelley, can you please confirm that on, on the message board? I got a yes there. And so the problem is we don't have any money coming in. And so, and many of our employees there are not paid, are not full-time employees. And so it's, it's reaching a balance of, we do have people that are full-time or are paid over half-time with benefits that I am concerned about. You know, we want to keep those people secured. However, that is something that, um, that we have to discuss later on. And we'll try to get more information on that one. That one's a little bit different than the other one. The 10-month secretary of staff will not be working during school closure. However, they will be paid for their normal work hours. I believe that's being, that's been modified, Shelley. That's still up, we're still discussing that because we want to rotate them in as well. Because as you start having equity issues between groups that work in the same office, every one group being allowed to stay home the entire time versus another group, I think we want to look at some sort of kind of keeping everybody in the loop and working. I think it's also a healthy thing. While they, as long as we're doing social distancing, keeping our spaces clean. You know, there we are. Long-term substitutes in IAs, they will be treated as the teachers that they've replaced. So they will be being paid in, just as the teachers are and the IAs are. Because they're, they're contracted through the end of the year. So that just makes sense. I'm using the wrong mouse and I'm getting really confused. Alright, the, um, and then the part-time staff that are, that are not working during the school closures related, how are, will they be paid for their full hours? Again, that is the out of time school tutors, you know, student service personnel, crossing guards, early childhood extended day coordinator and library or media personnel. So right now, the, the thoughts on that are, and a bunch of questions came in, so I'll get them in a second. We have to kind of iron that out. I'm looking strongly at those who are work enough to receive benefits over, you know, over the 20 hours a week that we should continue paying and the ones under. And I think that we have to look at a little bit closer. Because that's a, that's a difficult decision because most people are taking that as a second job because obviously their first job is not adequate. And so, you know, we're talking about, you know, taking care of people during this time, but also being fiscally responsible, which is a very, very tough balance. So, yes, so that's where we're at. Questions, if you want to open up the mic for questions, just simply, and I guess put in, just simply put in the question and then, then I'll direct you to go ahead and do that. And I, I'll just, if you don't mind, Ken, I'll just act like the chair here in directing people to speak on that. So. In the same room with me, I got Bob Hala and Bob Decker. I'm bobbed over here. He asked about the buses. I have been in, in touch with the, with Gribco company. I'm asking them, are they paying their staff? The initial thought from the chairs was that, you know, we, we are encouraging them to pay their staff during this downtime. However, you know, I want to talk to them about, you know, we shouldn't be paying, perhaps paying fuel costs, you know, during this time. I mean, they still have their other overhead costs and that kind of thing. But, um, you know, I'm still open to having a conversation. Not open, I sent them an email. We traded emails today. Just hoping, I hope to tackle tomorrow. No questions, I'm, anything that's been said or comments, concerns? But we don't want to be all talking. We do want to have some conversation. I'm waiting for a text to come in if somebody wants to say something. Could, could Shelley, you just ask a silly question, just to make sure the technology is working? Could, could Shelley, you just ask a silly question, just to make sure the technology's working? Now, can you do it, can you do it? Okay, so Shelley's there. Talk about learning or distance learning for kids. Alright, so I sent out, uh that's from Damian, I sent out a uh um a note that we're going to be talking with the teachers tomorrow, so we're still on, we're still rolling it out. Um but basically, it is not in place, and it's very important that we get that kind of across to parents, it is not in place of a school day. This is not like um e-learning or, you know, um that kind of thing, even though we might be doing things on the computer. Um it is something that we're going to, it's going to be brought down to the base level of teachers. Teachers know who, you know, is going to be able to roll out what their students can and can't do. They have a pretty good idea um what students um have for technology at home, what parents have for, um from email to internet. And kind of be reaching out, and so basically, we're kind of creating a educational I don't want to use the word kind of social worker model, but they're going to be reaching out to parents and and kids and and basically saying, what did you work on today? And did you, what are you reading? And and checking in on those kind of things and offering up activities. The accountability to those activities. While we can't hold the students accountable, we know if students are being told that they don't have to do anything, they won't do anything, so we are going to probably um try to do some strong encouragement that they, that they continue reading and and doing some activities at home, given a lot of choices. Um and um yeah, it's basically, as Alison kind of just chimed in, creating the ongoing learning environment for students. If this three weeks turns into two months or the rest of the year, um that's going to be a gap, and I think as a, our mission is as educators um and in your role in education is that we need to continue to do something at home. Um if we were closed for the remainder of the year, um you know, what that could look like, do we, do we, can we firm things up? I think we'll play that out when we reach that point. But the kind of the rollout um as we roll this out, uh looking at um it's very hard talking to a computer and no one's there. The rollout of, just for, sorry, to give my side note. Um the rollout of um different activities and how they work and that kind of thing, and I kind of said earlier, you know, there's going to be a lot of mistakes along the way, there's going to be a lot of things, a lot of sharing between educators of, did you try this, did you try that? I mean, my kids have been home for, for two days now. And um I'm sure I'll get nods from um people who've got the kids at home, it's already old. Um and they do want structure, they do want direction. Um and the, the real difficult part is going to be providing supports for those who need more um need more direction and more support, and I'm going to be, you know, leaning on the teachers to come up with plans that can reach all learners. Um again, it's not in place of, and it's important that I say that because um if you, when you put things in place of other educational laws going to, go in this, go into place such as, such as FAP, um which requires, you know, IEP services, which are very difficult to roll out in their entirety, um that kind of thing, so. Um Damian, I hope that kind of answers your question. You, you, we should be receiving emails from your principals today, this evening, talking about the rollout, and then we're going to kind of roll it from, from bigger to smaller, or smaller to bigger in the sense of going out to the teachers, and they're going to pick up on those um, pick up on those things. I'm Jessica Rhoad, um I'm concerned about going forward beyond closure, about community members with medical vulnerabilities who still be who's too many to remain isolated until the vaccine is made available. This is for both staff and the sick bank and students, will they need to figure out how to educate some children likely with special needs from home? And how might that impact the budget? I don't expect the answer tonight, but hopefully we start thinking in the future. You're absolutely correct. You know, we were talking about going down the stretch before we closed for the long week, talking about students who were um with medical, um who are medically vulnerable to the virus. They started to working on plans about sending them home early before the um real in um encouragement to close the buildings. Um and we're going to have to look at that, and it's a, it's a do can use this, it's a new frontier. Um uh we can say that with a little bit of joking tonight, uh but it really is, this is a kind of a game changer, and if this is to carry through the end of the year, um it's unprecedented, and and if we can stay um creative and working with our teachers and um our, our staffs about how we move things forward. Um I agree, because if um we don't have a uh a vaccine, and the vaccine's not supposed to come until next December. Um I mean, I know, I believe in, you know, human ingenuity and miracles, but we can see um that's what they're saying, it's, you know, twelve to eighteen months away. But we'll see how things unroll. Hey, uh Katie Edwards chimed in, can some of the non-union employees be given new responsibility to support teachers? And others, given the fluidity of the situation, perhaps principals can manage it, can manage by building as needed, will likely be different. Um you're, again, you've hit on the same thing that we are, we are talking about. Um well, when you say non-union employees, the first thing I was thinking about, we're, we have a lot of IAs. Um we're trying to figure out how to use them. In this time, so that some of that is, you know, if you have ideas and you I tell you, I'm, I'm coming up with ideas in the strangest of places when we're around my house, but if you have ideas about how people can use, um we'll take creativity, but we have a lot of a lot of hands right now that we have to keep, keep moving, and so, you know, how are we going to use IAs, maybe they're going to do in check-ins, maybe they can do one-on-one, this type of thing. This is, you know, a free part of our Google apps um that we could do with students, and maybe they could read to students, and students could read to them. I mean, the, the options are endless to our, your, our imagination on that, so you're right, Katie, um you know, starting there, then our other non-union employees um we're already starting to, you know, we have a, a, a librarian in the, in the high school that we're talking with um who's non-union uh librarian assistant, perhaps she can do, um put together book um orders, because you know, we start, we close all the libraries, you close all the schools. Oh, new problem, how are kids going to get new books when they finish reading the one in front of them? If you guys haven't had that problem at home, I got a reader. Um we already have that problem, so these are all new fluid problems coming forward. Um Ken chimed in, um I find the elementary schools document quite comprehensive, especially given the short timeframe to put it together. A lot of thought evident in the document, and again, I got, I got, I got to hand it back over to Kim and Sarah who did the lion's share of that and my principals, um who are going to all yell at me for not giving them full compliments, but it was one of those thank goodness for Google and shared docs and everybody just jumping in on that. I've got a lot of initial feedback from um the teachers that have, has been positive about it. They like the flexibility in it, in the sense of a lot of different ways to go. And like I said, I'm rolling it out tomorrow in this fashion with the teachers, so um hopefully we can um um make them uh comfortable with what's going on. Uh Keith chimed in, I'm pressed it in times, appreciate all the work and communication, it seems diligent so far. Most of the decisions and directions mirror my district. Things that change in every day. Yeah, um yeah, it is, and you know, we are looking at a lot of what other districts are doing. On these, you know, we are not, uh one, there's these uh and that's a lot of what caused the confusion on Friday, which again is another whole kind of story, is that all the superintends were communicating, and there was a lot of different information out there, you know, really um not clear guidance from the state, given the information that was out there. That kind of, I think you probably have heard about, and there's been some news, uh newspaper, New York Times article about, this even happened in other states. Um I'm hoping the other states who are yet to take action on this, um learn from our mistakes and are more decisive upfront. Other questions on this, and then I can, I'll can roll into next steps. So um while there's no there's no vote on this tonight, um I will have to set up a really, we can probably make it a very brief meeting on Thursday. And you know what, I, I can even do, I don't know if a lot of people are working from home, because this is something that we could do in the middle of the day, or we can do it at night. But Neil, do it, you know, do a doodle out there and and give the, all the times of the day, and you guys can pick every time that you're available to. But uh just a quick, probably a fifteen-minute meeting just like this, where we um have an actual vote on there to accept the MOA draft um that we have in front of us today. Um hearing not a lot of um feedback on the draft, I'm going to ask Alison to kind of proceed with the draft. If she has to, Alison and Emily to proceed with that draft moving forward as well. Emily and Alison just you know what, Judy, I missed your question, I'm sorry, up there, because someone said I agree with Judy, thank you for bringing me back up. When school is open again this spring, will the use of PD days be the rest of the year be reevaluated? Um yeah, I think we can probably safely, I want to say safely say that we will probably go full on out for the remainder of the year. That's me making an executive decision without my administrative team, so I cringe if they, you know, but that makes complete sense, I, yeah. Maybe you extend the school day a longer, you know. Don't, don't call me on that, seeing I start getting giddy in front of this computer. Yeah, so I agree with that. Darius, did you see Judy's question? No, that's what I just got, so I missed that. That's the problem, chatting and doing that. Any other, any other questions? I got things going around me here. Should we vote the work requirement as well? At the next meeting, yes, it'll be all um, all the materials I sent out to you. You know, I even, we'll probably even just do a vote in, in regards to the educational program moving out, just so you know, um you show that, we show the teachers that you guys are in support of it, um that as well. So we will do the, the uh non-union the unions, plural, um and administrators. Those documents at the next one, and I will, those will probably be updated, probably um as we kind of, some of those areas. Um and I'll send them to you prior, if you have a chance to look it over, what we'll do is probably go through them tomorrow. And then send them out to you by end of day, so you have some time to look through them and so on and so forth. Katie, uh, so if there's any questions on that, throw that in there. Katie Edwards, a lot of great work happening, thank you to you and your team for all you are doing. One more thing, one more thought is to keep their regular communications of families and students, so they feel they are connected to schools as much as possible during the scary time. You know what, really, to be honest with you, we are, as part of our um accountability, so we, so basically, we're not doing um we're doing for teachers to communicate with us, being done differently at the secondary levels, we're using department heads to help facilitate just a number of teachers. Then at the elementary schools, they're going to give us kind of updates, what they're working on, um how they're communicating with families, so it's um, you know, so that it is kind of transparent, and I'm going to be one of the most important parts, I think, of what we're doing is communicating with families and breaking this, the isolation um that this is going to cause. I mean, I can imagine it being an only child, um you know, and those kind of things, and I'm hoping that um especially um the teachers maybe even set up, we can have a lunch chat, and we can set up this kind of thing um with students that can, and really, if we can get computers into everyone's hands, um I think that's one of our goals, because that really is one of the biggest inequities within this plan. If you don't have a computer, it makes it a lot harder to work, so we want to try to make sure we get everybody with computer access um during the day. As well, as well as those who have to share a computer with mom, mom, dad, or um um their caretaker at home. Um if a lot of people are working from home, all of a sudden the family computer is being monopolized by the adult and not by the student who needs it more. And Bob's saying more robo, robo calls from me and that kind of stuff. Anytime there's any news change with the state, I mean, yep. They're, they're getting a lot from me right now, but you know, there'll probably be a little bit, we'll let the schools take over, and then when I get updates from the state, I'll be pushing that out. Pushing it out to families and such. And there's a lot of moving parts, and so really, as, as school community members, you're not bothering me. If you shoot me an email that says, did you think of this, did you do that, that kind of stuff, I'd rather be bothered than um miss something and um and and hurting somebody, you know, and not hurting somebody, but you know, leaving somebody out or missing a group or um missing out on a fantastic idea. See, Ken's kind of broken the silence, that means he wants the
Silence, I didn't know how you wanted to adjourn the meeting if we're going to do that, so.
Well, I know there's no one running off to watch any sports, but um we all got to see where Brady lands. Um so uh, yeah, hand it off to you, that's all I got, and um I'll be uh putting out the thing for next week. I mean, not next week, in two days.
Sure, I certainly want to thank everyone for um tuning in this evening. Uh this is a an unusual circumstance, obviously, but it's great to have the technology in place that we can stay and and conduct a meeting of this sort in our homes where it's uh supposedly safe, and uh we'll get through this, but I, I just, I will join Katie and all the others out there in commending you and your staff on just an amazing response and uh leadership as always for Frontier and Union Thirty-Eight, so thank you very much. With that, I can say that the Union Thirty-Eight joint meeting is I mean, Union Thirty-Eight meeting is closed at five fifty-five, six fifty-five, I'm sorry, PM.